I'd like to call the May meeting of the City of Richfield Planning Commission to order. Let me just give, we have the open forum and a hearing later in the meeting. I will give the way to participate virtually if you would like. You can call in to the open forum into the hearing by calling 415-655-0001 and using code 2630-712-7570 and password of 1234 for the open forum and for our hearing later in today's meeting. The first thing would be the approval of the previous month's minutes.
Can I make a motion to make a change? Or can I suggest a change?
Are you moving to amend the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
That's exactly what I'm doing. Notes that, I think it was Vice Chair who called the meeting to order. Right? Last month?
Yep.
So.
Okay. A motion has been made to amend the minutes from last month to indicate that the Vice Chair was presiding over the meeting. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All those in favor of amending the minutes and adopting them, please say aye.
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 Closed. All right. The next thing on our to-do would be the approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion?
I move.
And a second?
Seconded.
All in favor to approve the agenda for tonight, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed. All right. The first thing on our agenda then is a public hearing to consider an amended planned unit development, final development plan, conditional use permit for time extension and amendment to a parking agreement at 6500 Nicollet Avenue South. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. In April of 2022, Partnership Academy was granted land use approvals to expand their charter school. The approval included a condition that they have a permanent solution for 80 parking stalls by April 12th, 2024. A parking agreement with the city was drafted, executed, and recorded. Partnership Academy is now requesting additional time, which requires an amendment to the parking agreement with the city. In addition to a one-year extension, they are also asking that the agreement be revised so that it may be extended annually for the next 10 years with administrative approval only. They have provided a copy of their extended parking license with Bricksmore, the neighboring property, but it contains a 15-day termination clause. And a license agreement is not a permanent solution, meeting the code requirements, even without a 15-day termination clause. Partnership has indicated that they've been waiting for Richfield Medical Group to sell. Last Friday, we received an email from a representative of the Richfield Medical Group indicating that the property is actively on the market. Acquisition of the property would need to be contingent upon zoning approval as removal of the building for the construction of a surface lot would require, at a minimum, a rezoning, a plat, and PUD approval. The Planning Commission has a number of options before this evening. It can either recommend approval of the request as requested, including the option for the 10 years of administrative extension without any penalty. It can recommend approval with modifications, such as a shorter timeframe, with or without a prorated penalty. Or it can recommend denial of the request, triggering the full $50,000 penalty. Welcome, any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Could you talk about how the $50,000 penalty was established? Like, who did that and how it was determined that $50,000 would be the amount?
Yeah. I can, so the, thank you Chair Commissioner Sersa. The resolution of approval required that there be a parking agreement with the city and that the agreement detail the terms and penalties of the agreement. So, the City Council did not necessarily set the $50,000. I can only get, I looked back through the files and I didn't see any conversation about it. So, I can only guess that we previously Audi dealership had a $50,000 escrow agreement for their parking structure. So, I'm guessing that staff felt that the $50,000 was a comparable fair number that was applied to a different property, so it would be fair to apply it to this property.
Is, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Staff, where is, where are they currently, or do they currently have a parking plan in place where they're doing overflow parking right now? Or what is that?
Yeah. Commissioners and Commissioner Hui, they have 37 parking stalls on their site and they are, they have a license agreement with Bricksmore, the neighboring property, for 60 more stalls.
Do they currently have that already?
Yes, they do. And they have had that in place for pretty much the last four years, almost continuously. They, which does equal more than the required 80 stalls at the moment. But, yeah.
Is the applicant or a representative here? Would you like to speak to your request? If you could say your, if you could sign in at the podium and then say your name for the record?
I'm the Operations Director at Partnership Academy. So, we've been working with Samantha to try to find a resolution for some of our parking issues that we have. Obviously, 37 spaces is not enough for the amount of staff members that we have. We've been working closely with the Richfield Medical Group. We even today put in a letter of intent to purchase that property as it went on sale last Friday. The reason why we're asking for this extension is we want to be strategic about how we're spending our money for our students. If we were what was originally proposed two years ago to build structured parking on the property that we own, that would be $1.3 million for us, which would be over $100,000 of annual debt service that we would take on that would come directly out of our operating budget, which translates directly to teachers being lost. And it just didn't feel like that was the right thing to do. And we have a huge open space at the hub, at the hub, where there's tons of open parking. And we want to be able to purchase the Richfield Medical Building just based on the location of that and how our building sits up against Nicollet. Like, it's more advantageous for that parking to be up near the front so that families and visitors can access the building as opposed to walking through the back of our property to the front. So, that's why we're requesting additional time to be able to see those other possibilities come to fruition and to not unnecessarily, when we have a viable solution, to not unnecessarily sink a lot of money into a structured parking, a structure.
Is there a reason why the request for the extension came after the deadline?
We, I'm trying to remember the timing of all of that. We, we were in conversation prior to that. Samantha and I were. In terms of why it came after the deadline, I can't recall the exact timeframe of it. I think we were just going through the process of submitting the application and it just came in a couple of weeks late.
Question for that. Can you talk about, I have two questions actually. Why you think you shouldn't have to pay the penalty because it is expired? And then just the second question, so you can answer them together, is if the hub decided to withdraw the agreement with a 15-day notice, what would your plans be for parking? What's the backup, given that there's not much of a safety net with the current agreement?
Sorry. The first part of the question was around why we shouldn't have to pay the fee. Right now, we are exceeding what our parking requirements are by 17 stalls. Because that is in place and has been in place for the entirety that we've been at 6500 Nicollet, I feel like we're, we're sufficing all of the parking requirements that were asked of us. Is it the long-term solution at this point? No. But we have no reason to believe that Bricksmore is going to be redeveloping anytime soon. We've been, I've been in conversation every other month with Richard D. Polito, who's head of their development process over there at the hub. And there's been, there's been no movement, especially with the financial climate and the rising interest rates and stuff right now. They're just not ready to make any moves. So, because of that, it just felt like, you know, we've, we've done what we've needed to do to make the parking arrangements work. Understand if that's not the way that the Planning Commission feels, because it's not true to the letter of our agreement, but just hoping we can have some agreement that, like, we've, we've done our best to fulfill that and we have in terms of the number of spots. And then the second part of your question was, can you remind me again?
Sorry. What would happen if the hub said that, gave you the 15-day notice that the parking agreement was no longer in place? What would you do for parking?
Right now, we would have our 37 spaces that we have and then we would, we would work on developing our structured parking. We already have the, we worked with Rashawn. We were in contact with them earlier this week to say, like, if we needed to get going on this thing, how fast could it happen? It's not, it's not a huge project. It would be several months, as long, depending on, you know, what time of year we're able to break ground on it, but it wouldn't be a huge project for them to, to move forward on it. So, we would, we would be out of parking for a little bit of time. There is some street parking across from 65th that we could utilize. We have a lot of staff members who live close to the school, so we could work on getting vouchers, bus vouchers, for them to be able to take, you know, public transportation and incentivize carpooling and things like that.
Do you have a sense of how many parking spots at the hub are regularly used?
Right now? About 50?
Well, I mean during the school year.
About 50 of them?
About 50 of them?
Yeah.
And to clarify with that letter of intent, you're, you're hoping to purchase the, the building and hoping to make it part, uh, surface parking or in the short term? Or could you clarify what that letter of intent, what the intention is with that?
Yep. So, our letter of intent is obviously to purchase the building. As long as our agreement with Bricksmore is in place, it's still, we're, we would have the option of always demolishing, going through the steps with the city, of course. But because we have pieces in place, we, we want to be able to preserve that building for potential office spaces. It's a medical building right now, so we could have our school nurse run vision and hearing screenings and use the building. There is what I would guess to be about 20 parking spaces in that, for that building right now. And then if we have, if, if the city says, you know, we need you to have the 80 guaranteed spots, we could certainly move forward with demoing and creating surface parking. But that would be in, it would be preferable for us to be able to keep that building for other uses until it's necessary to create that surface parking unless the city thought otherwise. Yeah.
Just one question. You did talk about the expansion.
I just had a question. I did read the proposal. And in there, there's also a part where they plan, the Academy plans to build out the current building? And I just wanted to comment that, and how does that fit in with the parking problem?
Sure. At this time, we don't have any, we don't have any expansion plan before us. So, our hearing today is limited to the existing, to the existing proposal for amendment. So, I mean, if you want, if you would like to say-
I think I can just briefly clarify what that is. So, in the, the staff write-up or in the Planning Commission agenda, there's multiple versions of the amendment that we've had with Bricksmore. One's coming from 2022, which is when we were planning the expansion of our building, which has already been approved and completed. So, that, that addition is already existing. So, we still have the 37 parking spaces that we own right now, and that is after the addition was approved two years ago and we finished it last year.
Planner Cosby, have we received any emails or other comments?
Chair, no, we have not.
All right. I would, if there's no one else here to speak to this item, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Commissioner Canely, I motion, I move to close the public hearing.
Sorry, a second.
Seconded by Sirma.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed. All right. Discussion on the application.
I guess I have some, some comments. I guess, as far as like the topic of like whether to extend or not, I'm less concerned about extending it, more just concerned about like figuring out like what, what the plan is going forward or giving them opportunity to put the plan in place. The, the $50,000 seems, I guess, punitive. I'd rather just get this, you know, give them an opportunity to figure this out in an effective way, rather than just, you know, slap on the wrist with that. But if the long-term plan for purchasing that is to turn into a surface lot, I guess, I know that, we'll discuss that when it comes up, but I don't know, that doesn't exactly get me excited about a use of that space. I'd rather see that remain a viable business and, and, you know, something that could be used and better, that would be a better use of the land space as it is now or a structure there. So, I'm not super excited about bulldozing that to make more parking space. I guess it seems like the, the existing plan or to put a structure on there and make better use of the land space would be kind of, I get that's burden something expensive, but would be the best land use. And so, I, I don't know. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to wrap my head around all the options and, and it's kind of funky trying to like decide now for something that's like three steps ahead. But I'd like to avoid a big parking spot, big parking lot, and would like to see them, you know, resolve this with the, with the plan they originally had in place if, with that structure if possible.
This is a question for my other, my co-commissioners. When we discussed the parking structure at the Audi dealership, I, I'm trying to remember the resolution we landed on during our last meeting with that.
Planner Cosby, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we determined that they were going to, we gave them an extension and then they were going to document their efforts to come to a final permanent solution.
That's correct.
And then at the end of that extension, we would address it then.
They were to report back with the efforts or with the, have a report for you on the progress that they've made and the efforts that they've put forward for developing that parcel.
Remind me, was that a two-year extension?
It was, but with an, actually, I think, yeah, it was two-year, two-year extension, but it had a one-year, like administrative option to renew. So, technically, three-year extension.
Thank you very much for helping us out. I'm glad we have that context as we discuss this further. I mean, I, speaking personally, I'm not a huge fan of more, creating more surface parking either, and I don't think that's in line with the direction that our policymakers in the city have been leaning towards. So, to tell them to, you know, if they're about to acquire a building, to, to direct them to tear down that building and then make more surface parking seems like not a good use of our time, or I mean of our resources as a city. So, I, I mean, I personally am apt to grant them the extension, but it is again this issue of are we gonna, are we setting ourselves up for indefinite extensions?
In my, in my mind, it's like, use it while you can, but the hope is that the hub is redeveloped and that doesn't become available, you know? Getting a Plan B in place would be, would be a good idea. And if, I don't know, if kicking that can down the road, I guess that's up to them. Like, if they want to continue to use that space, I'd be curious what the, what staff thinks of that. I don't see any issue with it, just knowing that the hub lot is so unused right now. Like, if it's, it's there, it's there. I don't have any personal issues with that. But if it comes up that it is, it's no longer a feasible option, then I would like to see them ready to roll with Plan B. And that should be kind of laid out in our, in our response to this, in my opinion.
Thanks Commissioner Hui for mentioning that. And I think that might, that might dovetail with kind of the precedent we did last month with the Audi dealership. Perhaps a path forward would be to grant some length of an extension, but also require some sort of documentation of like what a Plan B might look like if they were to lose that arrangement. Doesn't sound like that is imminent, but like you said, it's not likely permanent, but it's also not near either. So, I'm kind of looking for a, some, some sort of path forward for that where you could grant an extension, but also, also like require some sort of Plan B involved.
Yeah. Right, right now, it's, it's clear that Bricksmore is happy to lease the parking and that can change at any time. But I, I think several of us at least, we, we agree that there's so much parking in that area that requiring or building more is not ideal for this, this building, for this school. I, I remember talking about the expansion a few years ago and not wanting to prevent it from happening due to parking. I definitely am interested in making an extension work.
Can I ask a question of staff? When this was originally granted, what was the, what was like the, the end game with this extension or this, was just that like if push came to shove, they would build a structure? Is that?
Yeah. Chair and Commissioner Hui, in their 2022 submittal, they, they basically said, uh... Give me a second. In the event that Partnership Academy is unable to secure the site at 6440 Nicollet Avenue, currently owned by the Richfield Medical Group, Partnership Academy will complete the proposed structured parking to meet the parking needs required by the city. So, they, I mean, their, their goal along has been to acquire the neighboring property. And if that's not possible, then that, that's when they're gonna, they, it appears to me that that's when they feel that, that their only option is to construct.
Thank you for the clarification. I, I think seeing movement on that property neighboring them is a good thing.
Yeah. I would concur with what other commissioners have said about hating to see the idea of a building demolished for parking really does not align with the values of what the city is working towards right now, I don't think. I would also say that I would, I don't want any agree, not that any in place, there is any in place right now, but I would hate to see any agreement that would make it more difficult for the hub to redevelop when redevelopment plans come forward. So, I would hate for us to require anything that would make it difficult for the hub to get out of this agreement as redevelopment inevitably will occur. So, I would support the extension. I, I think perhaps 10 years is not, is a little too long and that we have a really nice precedent with what we've done with Honda and I would feel more comfortable with a timeframe closer to that.
I was thinking the exact same thing. I think it'd be, you know, more reasonable to have the two with an extension of one year. But I also think, you know, the, the $50,000 penalty seems that it should not be applicable here, especially with a school. And like what you just said, with the constructing, anything in an area that might be redeveloped in the future, I think is not a good use of funds, is not a good long-term plan. It could be detrimental. But the other thing too is like what's already been discussed, that area is wide open. There's a ton of parking that's not being used and I know that's not permanent, nor is it, you know, in their control. But I think that's also the reality until something gets changed and I don't, I think, yeah, that's my thought.
I wanted to make sure to call attention to something in the staff report. Sure. About prorating the- That's what I was just saying. Okay. Yeah. Well, yeah, the staff report recommends prorating the $50,000 by the, for the two months of non-compliance. So, I mean, that's one option. What do commissioners feel about that as an option or feel about?
I would be comfortable waiving the penalty.
I agree with that too, waiving it.
My understanding, and I, I just want to make sure that I understand correctly here, is that the penalty is in place because there wasn't a plan to either purchase the neighboring property or build the structure for parking.
That is correct.
Now, there is a letter of intent to purchase the property, but I, I would like to discuss more the, the prorated penalty and what purpose that serves. Well, the penalty is to enforce the terms of the, of the agreement with the city. Yeah. They couldn't make an offer on a property that wasn't for sale. Sure. But I think also, Planner Cosby, correct me if I'm wrong, the, I mean, that would be satisfied if they had a, a long-term parking agreement instead of the, like a covenanted agreement instead of the 15-day agreement as it is currently.
That is correct.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you. I, does anyone else?
I guess in my opinion, this is kind of what I think a, a potential solution might be is let them use the, the land as long as it's available. But if that, their 15 days gets called on or that is, comes to a term, then I would expect to see a, a solution immediately brought and like with a more strict timeline of like they need to like be ready to roll on building that structure or something. As far as like buying that land and turning it into a service lot, to me, that's just not a feasible option that I'd like to see. And who knows when the time comes, like it might be a whole new group of people up here and a whole new group of people on the City Council, but that, that doesn't comply with our comprehensive plan and it doesn't seem like that would resonate with that. So, that doesn't seem like a good option. So, it's kind of continue to use this or build a structure. That's kind of the crux of it. So, the use of these, these licensed lots or the Bricksmore spots, because I want to see action on, on the structure, I guess. So, I'd like to see something in the agreement that kind of like pushes that issue. Any curious thoughts of the question?
Well, I, I, my question was, could we propose an extension but require that, because of this 15-day notice thing, require, for example, say we grant the extension for one year with, and give staff authority to extend it for an additional year. If, if the school has provided you with a contingency plan, should they lose that, that additional parking? So, the effect would, to give them, the effect would be to give them the two-year extension, but at the halfway point, they need to have, have a plan in case they lose those spots.
Chair and Commissioners, I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure what a contingency plan would look like. It sounds to me that the commission might be in agreement that the structure is on, on their own site is the preferred option. So, if the time extension is granted, then instead of a report on progress of, of conversations had like Audi, perhaps they could come forth with like concept, like, because there's different levels of development plans. There's like concept development- would look like. It sounds to me that the commission, um, might be in agreement that the structure is on, on their own site is the preferred, um, option. So if the time extension is granted, then instead of a report on progress of, of conversations had like Audi, perhaps they could come forth with like concept, like, uh, because there's different levels of development plans. There's, um, like concept development, then there's, um, like plan level development, and then there's construction level development. So it takes periods of time to get to the point where you're ready to, there's plan iterations of buildings before you're ready to construct a building. So you could, um, ask that they be working towards like a concept level development plan or construction plan, um, within that timeframe, since there's, there's not conversations to be had with other entities like there was with Audi. That, that's a thought.
Can I ask a clarifying question of the commissioners? Or is anyone suggesting that, uh, um, ramp be built prior to the hub redevelopment? Is that the goal of any commissioners? Okay.
No.
Since, since the hub redevelopment plan is so unknown at this time, such a question mark, I wouldn't advocate that at this time.
I would be reluctant to require a plan for the parking structure in a year or two. But...
Well, my, my thought was not so much a concept for a parking structure, but more if the, if the, they lose the, you know, if they get the 15-day notice, what's the, what's the immediate plan? That was more my concern than the concept of a parking structure because personally, I think it, it would be premature before, at this point. But just that they have, that they have some kind of formalized plan, should they suddenly lose that space, so that we aren't disrupting the, the surrounding neighborhood.
I have a clarifying question. If Bricksmore terminates that contract, will the school need to come back to the planning commission with this updated plan?
We haven't approved any plans for a parking structure. And I believe that Bricks, or in the staff report, it said something that, um, Partnership Academy is required to notify the city if Bricksmore gives notice. But at this point, we've not approved a parking structure for that.
Correct. Um, so the, uh, their plan, as Jake mentioned when, uh, when he spoke, was that if they received the termination from Bricksmore, their plan is just to park on city streets and then hurry up and start designing a structure. So, but that takes a really long time to start designing the, the structure and then to get to the point where you're actually ready for construction. It's, could be up to a year. So, um, but, yeah, I, I don't know if that, if, well, that speaks more to your question, Chair. Um, they, um, they are supposed to, it like, basically if Bricksmore withdraws the, the license agreement and they don't have Bricksmore's parking anymore, the $50,000 is due.
Okay.
And they keep paying it every year until they have something permanent in place. That's what the agreement says.
Is there a predicted risk level of Bricksmore terminating this license agreement, leasing agreement?
They didn't want to get rid of the 15-day termination clause. And that was the reason that the, um, that it was delayed in coming to you because, uh, we were hoping, and I think they, I hope they were hoping, that, uh, they could negotiate with Bricksmore to get that 15-day termination clause removed.
Okay.
But they couldn't.
This is an unfair question, so tell me that it's an unfair question. But how long can like, uh, plans sit on the shelf before they become obsolete? In, in the sense that like, say the hub isn't totally throwing out hypothetical numbers. Say the hub isn't redeveloped for 10 years, and we've asked them to design a parking structure that won't be used for another 10 years. Can you pick up plans that were developed eight years ago and construct them? I mean, like, are we asking them to do something that they wouldn't be able?
Yeah. I understand your question, Chair and Commissioners. And that's why I was recommending a, or not, I, I don't know that I was recommending, I don't know, recommending anything. I was suggesting like a concept level of design, not a full-blown construction documents level of design. It shows progress, but yet is still malleable and isn't too much money to put forward.
And those have a shelf life, like they...
Well, they're conceptual, so they could be, they could be further worked on at, at the point at which they get designed to a construction level.
Great. I'm not familiar, so I just wanted to know, like, it's, I didn't want them to go through an exercise that would just collect dust. If like, that is an exercise that then in eight years, they could pick up to be that much farther ahead in the game of constructing a ramp. That does seem like a, um, interesting option.
I think that that seems like a reasonable middle ground for this. Uh, go ahead.
Sorry, I have a question. Like, reg, I don't know. I, is it, do we really want to like play police of like giving them homework and doing it? Like, I would rather just say like, hey, if your parking situation ends, here's a feasible amount of time to build a structure, get it done, or you're fined. Um, I don't really want to be like, go do a concept, bring it. But that feels like, I don't know, it feels like busy work. Like, if they want to do that work, knowing that this is what's coming, and that's, they, they have, they feel that that is like a good use of their time and they have their heads up, that's their project to manage. I don't care, you know. But I just want to have a plan, like, okay, 15 days, you got 15 days. What's a feasible, like, you need to break ground on this project within, I don't know, six months, a year, like? And so then that's up to them to have their plan in place to do that.
But I think the issue is that if, if, if the 15 days is granted, the $50,000 is due when, when the agreement breaks. But I think, at least what I, what I was trying to suss out was that we take the, the, you know, we take, we take the immediacy of tomorrow, Bricksmore terminates the agreement, and then they, they owe $50,000 next month. We take that away and, and say, okay, uh, by next year, um, have a concept or a plan of some sort, a contingency plan or a concept, and then staff can extend it another year, um, and to push, and to give a two-year total extension.
But that's, that's a year of not having a parking plan in place. And that's, that's a long time to burden the whole neighborhood with, you know, 60-some spots, I guess, of, of street parking.
I totally agree. And that would be something that I'd be concerned about. And I also think that it, like, to me, six months seems like a good number too, because if you go shorter than that, if something were to happen in, say, January, and you can't physically construct until, you know, the ground thaws, something like that. I mean, I, I think three months might be too aggressive if you get everything done. So I think six would be a good time and just have that as a stipulation.
So what, you're proposing a six-month, or like, what are you suggesting then?
I, I would say that they would need to be able to build that structure within six months, should something happen, and leave it at that. And I don't know if that would require, what kind of plans that would require anything. It's not my expertise to know that. So I think that that's a good middle ground, I think.
The applicant that mentioned, uh, timeline of, of building the structure, um, would you mind commenting? You'd mentioned something about like, it wouldn't be that complicated a structure, we could get it done in X months. What?
Yeah, so we already have concept drawings. So we've worked with our architect to already have concept drawings of this prior to the 2022 time when we came to talk about the addition. Um, so those are already in place. Um, like I said, we've spoken with our contractor, and the physical building of the structure is only a couple of month process. Um, but then there's obviously financing and things like that that need to be in place too. So I, I can't speak to the exact timeframe, but, um, we, we already do have concept drawings. We know how many spots that we can get in that space. Um, and our architect has already created those.
So finances were in order, and you, everything was cleared to break ground, you could build the thing in three months, you think?
More questions.
It's a lot of ifs, ifs are doing a lot of work there.
Based on his previous comment, I guess.
If he has enough shovels.
But also, like financing, if financing is in place, that's a bit, I mean, like, that's a, not a short...
I mean, to be totally fair, like, this was the plan we had in place already, so I'm just trying to like, get something figured out, right?
There's risks with this. And it would be unrealistic, I think, personally, that if they get notice, if this council thinks that they can have, or if this commission thinks that they could have a parking ramp built within six months, I think is, um, I don't think that that's realistic.
The only risk we're discussing though, however, is whether or not they have to pay money. Because the risk is real right now. If 15 days comes to term, then they've got to figure something out. And we're only really discussing whether or not the agreement says they have to start paying 50 grand a year on this thing, right? So the situation you're describing is, is at, is kind of right now.
I would argue the consequences to the neighborhood if they, is also a risk that we need to weigh.
I'm sorry, I'm not clear though, but like, that is the risk right now, right? Like, if, if they're, if they get called on 15 days, if they can only use that. So I'm sorry, what are you?
You, I...
I'm not sure what you're saying.
I thought that, I heard you say that the, the only risk that we're talking about right now is the $50,000.
No, I'm saying that's the only, that's the only difference between the current plan and a new plan. Like, the risk to the neighborhood is already a thing right now that I'm concerned about.
Yes. It was, it was a thing when this was approved two years ago. Yep.
So like that, is improving. Or do you have a plan to like, reduce that risk or the neighborhood?
I personally do not have a plan to reduce that risk. No, I do not.
I mean, I, I think, personally, I think like, the agreement is, is already broken. So I do think what you're saying is right, that it is right, right now, it's coming down to this $50,000 penalty, because the, the covenant, the deal, uh, the agreement is already broken. So if we give an, if we were to give an extension, that's basically maintaining the status quo.
Yeah.
So right now, is the commission comfortable with the status quo? I mean, if this were, if the agreement were dated to expire a year from now instead of right now, would we be concerned, as concerned about this situation?
I think the main difference in my eyes is that this, the agreement ended now, but their, their alternative parking solution is still available to them. But once that becomes not available, that's when like, it becomes an issue. And so I would like a solution in place that better lays out what to do there. And if that's just saying, you know what, sorry, you got to build your structure, we need to figure this out now, then that, that is an option, to say like, this needs to be done, this needs to be taken care of, and here's a bill for 50 grand, you know?
And I think the, the question then to the commission is whether we think it's a wise, a wise idea to be building surface parking or parking structures, considering the larger redevelopment that everyone hopes occurs in that area. And so on a personal level, I think it would be premature to start building, um, parking ramps, or worse yet, surface parking, because there might be, whatever concept or plan comes up in the next few years, might make that completely obsolete and wouldn't be a good use of anyone's time or resources.
I agree.
It seems to, it seems to me like the applicant is well cognizant of this risk and has said already has architectural renderings in place of a potential ramp. I think the applicant's well aware of the risks they're facing with their parking, what their requirements will be of them if they lose that space. Uh, so I, I think there's not a huge change to the status quo by extending this by a few years, because they're all, we're all well aware of the risks and we're all tolerating them right now. It's not a perfect situation, but there's always the, 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 there's always the reality that if this changes in the future, and in a few years' time, this will come back before the city and the planning commission again to review. I know it might seem like kicking the can down the road, and I suppose in some ways it is, but also it's a way of letting ourselves come back to review this situation again when information changes in the future, or doesn't. And if, and if it doesn't, then we make a decision, or whoever's on this commission at that time makes that decision then. So I, I, I'm not trying to, I want to sound like I'm trying to punt on this issue, but I think some sort of short-term extension solution is probably the way forward, keeping in mind that we're all aware of the risks of this situation. I think they've been sussed out here pretty well, and we've had a really good conversation about that.
I'd also think about, you know, the reasons that they gave about not doing any development at the hub site now are interest rates and the overall climate of development. I don't think that that's going to change in the next year, or maybe even two years. Like, that's, that change will be gradual. Um, and so I think, you know, a one-year with an extension of one year might be a good way to handle this. And it is punting it, but I think there's just too many other variables. And above all else, you don't want to do harm and potentially, you know, limit what could be done with the hub site, which I think has a lot of potential.
Rather than punting this, as we call it, I, I think that by granting an exception, we're allowing them to continue to manage a difficult situation without interfering. They've done an adequate job managing their parking, and they have a new opportunity next door to find solutions that don't involve building a ramp.
Right.
So I'm, I'm happy with an extension, if that's our decision.
Um, maybe instead of the, considering all the length of time of all the developments and planning and so forth, right now, one of the staff's suggestions was to make it up to 10 years, um, with staff, you know, uh, including the option for 10 years of administrative extensions without any penalty. What if, considering the long timeframe, but also not making this forever and ever, what if we were to say something like five years instead of 10 years? Um, and that might be more realistic to some kind of, you know, change in economic conditions or plans for hubbers. I, I mean, I feel like in five years, there might be a better idea of what's going to happen. Um, 10 years seems like a long time, maybe five years is a little bit more reasonable.
I agree.
I agree.
I'm, I'm even of a mind that if, if we granted a, a two-year extension to the dealership, that a similar extension would be consistent.
I don't know that it's completely analogous though, because the dealership, all of that is under their, I mean, that's most, that's land they own, it's, it's kind of, it's, it's more under their control. And this, we're talking about other moving pieces of larger developments that don't, that aren't dependent necessarily on what the school does. So I think there's a different, it's a similar, but also dissimilar situation, because there's more moving pieces here.
I hear you.
So, I don't know. Personally, I feel, I, I feel like five years might be reasonable. I don't, what is the feeling of other people on the commission?
I think five years is good.
So it seems like we have at least some support for that. Um, so then the other question really is about a recommendation about the, the penalty. And one staff suggestion was to prorate it. I, I meant, I heard another commissioner suggest waiving it. What are the thoughts on that?
I'm still in support of waiving it, it's a school. I, I think that that's, would be a bad use of their funds. And it seems to be punitive when I think they're doing due diligence and, and honoring our agreement and, you know, they have plans in place.
I, I agree that a $50,000 fee would be punitive. And, and I look at this as, um, these are the terms of the agreement, and a prorated portion is fair, in my opinion.
How much was the prorated portion was, was, uh, $8,333? So, I mean, telling, you know, as, as a, as a employee of a school district, as a teacher, like, that's a significant amount of money for a school. It, now, is it, so that, I mean, that's a, is it, is that, they broke the penalty, yes. They are also, um, a taxpayer-funded institution with a requirement to use the taxpayers' funds and do public good. So I don't know, is that the best use overall of public funds to give, to give the city $8,000 for this parking issue?
Uh, Chair, just to, um, get the conversation moving, um, I'm going to make a motion to recommend approval as requested, including the option for a five-year, uh, five years of administrative extensions without any penalty due. So I'm making a motion for zero penalty, and we'll see where that goes.
Commissioner Charlton seconds.
All right. So there's a motion in a second to, um, take the staff's suggestion of administrative approval, but reducing it to five years, and then also, uh, no penalty due. Is there any discussion on, on that motion?
Just ask staff, does that cover what we need to cover in a motion? Do we leave anything out?
I, I understood the motion.
They understood the motion? Okay, in the question, okay, yeah.
Is there any discussion about that?
Nothing to break new ground. I, I support the, the five-year measure, and I think we understand both sides of this discussion.
All right. All in favor of that action, please say aye.
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 Closed.
Nay.
All right. Uh, the motion carries. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Due to my, due to my... Uh, due to my, due to my error when I was reading over the, um, on my notes for the agenda, I neglected the open forum, and so I apologize for that. Um, so if, if, uh, with the, if, with unanimous consent of the, um, commission, I will propose that we do that now, all right? So the public forum is an opportunity for members of the public present, um, or virtually present to express, um, their opinions or, uh, thoughts on issues, generally not on the agenda for the evening. Is there anyone here, uh, who would like to address the commission? All right, were you here to address the commission about something else? Okay, all right, all right, uh, did we get any calls or any emails?
Chair, we did not.
Okay, so, uh, we can move on and then, uh, resume the approved, the agenda as approved. Um, the next thing would be, um, the consideration of resolution, oh, whoops, sorry, I'm on the wrong. The ordinance amendment requiring adjusting parking requirements, is there a staff report on that?
There is, thank you Chair and Commissioners. At its April 2023 work session on policy topic priorities, the City Council directed planning staff to examine parking requirements. Staff added the research to our 2024 work plan, and in February, a joint work session was held between the planning commission and the city council. The draft ordinance before you this evening updates the city parking requirements as follows. To reduce the requirements for a class three restaurant from 17 stalls per thousand to seven stalls per thousand. To create a requirement for libraries, museums, and art galleries, as there currently is none, it would be for 3.33 stalls per thousand square feet of floor area. To expand the council's flexibility in relation to non-driving populations, there currently is some flexibility written into the code for senior housing, and the proposed amendment adds the following language, "And others similarly low-driving populations, including but not limited to households earning below 60% AMI, people who are neurodiverse, and/or people with disabilities." Next, "To adjust the parking requirement for multifamily housing to be consistent across all zoning districts at 1.25 stalls per unit, and to eliminate the language for discretion based on context, such as pedestrian orientation." On this one, I must point out that this is the change that staff still has concerns with. Some areas of the city have right-ofways that are less than 36 feet wide. Overflow parking onto these streets from new development, particularly on east-west roads, makes emergency vehicle access tight when there's snow. On-street parking ends up being restricted or eliminated completely, leading to police enforcement issues and pushing parking deeper into neighborhoods, resulting in complaints. Staff recommenda- staff's recommendation on this revision continues to be to not only to retain the existing discretionary language, but to expand it to include roadway width and orientation. Next, there's a, a new change that was not discussed at the work session. Staff is recommending this due to the removal of the discretionary language for multifamily that I just mentioned. Staff is recommending adjusting the parking maximums for multifamily housing from, instead of being a percentage of the overall amount of parking required, changing it to 1.5 stalls per unit. This would help ensure that new multifamily residential development has the flexibility needed to secure financial funding. And then finally, we're also recommending a couple of minor housekeeping changes to apply traditional rounding and to allow on-street parking to count towards off-street requirements by right rather than by council approval. Um, with that, I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Uh, if there are no questions from Commissioners, we can open the public hearing. Um, if you would like to speak, come up to the podium, please.
Hi, again, I'm Larry Ernstur, uh, 6727 Aldeed Avenue South. Uh, first, I need to comment on the staff report. It was really one of the best, one of the most thorough, most comprehensive, most thoughtful, and well-written, uh, reports. It's ironic, however, that tonight, we're talking about parking at Partnership Academy, uh, because parking is a challenge, and they don't have enough and can't get enough. And simultaneously, you're talking about eliminating or minimizing some parking requirements. I would recommend that the ordinance be left as they are, especially as regard to multifamily homes. If you reduce parking, and staff is right to be concerned about that, if you reduce parking by 40%, what you're going to do is push cars from on-street to off-street parking, or off-street to on-street parking. And, um, so that's my thoughts. Leave it alone.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here to speak to that? Have we received any calls or emails regarding this?
No, we have not.
I would entertain a motion then to close the public hearing.
Uh, Commissioner Charlton makes a motion to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Hui seconds?
All right, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is closed. Discussion?
I really liked the staff report. I, I also share the, the thought though, if you do change the rules on parking around restaurants, are you going to push a lot of these cars into neighborhoods? I think the city council was thinking that it would push more people to explore other modes of transportation to those areas. I don't know if that's totally feasible. I know like where I live on the east side, it would be hard for me to take public transit to a restaurant on the west side as opposed to just driving. So I, I do agree with that, with that thought. And I also am concerned, you know, comparing Richfield to Minneapolis, trying to find restaurant parking around, you know, a lot of these areas is really challenging, and you end up parking in front of someone's house. So I'd be sensitive to that, but everything else, um, in the staff report, I agree with.
I have a question regarding that. So that number's going from 17 per thousand to seven. Um, do you have any, um, examples of restaurants in Richfield and the amount of seating they hold? Um, just to get a, a real world, how many spots are we talking about here? It's class three, which is fast food, correct?
Um, it's more like, um, just casual sit-down restaurants. Um, I wouldn't ass- uh, I mean, it does also apply to like drive-through restaurants. I have it in the workshop, so I'm scrolling for it right now, um, because it is in the packet somewhere. And my computer just throws up on me. So, 17 per thousand is, is very high by, um, by a lot of different sources. We looked at a number of different, um, uh, kind of autho- authorities, uh, you know, and compared to other communities, and then we did do a comparison of like similar restaurants in, so we looked at Joy's, Pataya, and, um, the, uh, the thing that's turning into the Chicken Coop and, uh, a couple of other, the standalone restaurants around town. And we did base our recommendation off of existing restaurants within the city as well as comparisons to what other municipal codes, uh, in, in adjacent cities require and what the standards are. So, um, I, I can't pull it up at the moment, but it, it's, it's in the packet.
I, I guess like, for example, like a restaurant that can hold, say, 100 people, we're losing 10 spots per thousand, so you're, you're losing one spot in that situation, which to me is like, okay, like that's, that's a.
Per, per, per square, that's square footage, per thousand square feet.
Sorry, sorry, um, so like, I don't know, like it seems like a small amount. I don't know.
Um, I, I believe that these recommendations reflect the work that we did with city council during our work session, and I'm excited about them.
I concur, I really appreciate the staff report, I love the conversation that we had. Um, I love the conversation that we're having now, I love that this is on the table, like this is important work. Um, this is why I want to be on the planning commission, because I want to approve projects and not regulate parking. So I like love that we're talking about this. I have some specific questions, and I'm feeling like, um, this staffer, like, this PDF is different than the PDF at home, so I'm like not finding what I'm, but like the optional, um, uh, reduction of parking requirements around rapid transit, is that in this require- or in this recommendation?
Chair and Commissioner Sturso, no, it's not. Um, we brought that up as a, um, things to keep talking about for future, like visioning towards future projects, but that is not currently on the table, no. It is only reductions to existing parking regulations, um, that are in the, the ordinance, uh, the proposed ordinance.
Thank you for that clarification, a couple other questions. A, that's really disappointing, but, um, I hope we keep the momentum on that, because I think that's important work. Um, I'm wondering if you can, I have two questions. Um, comment on, um, the continued issues about, um, and police enforcement around multifamily housing and, um, cars on the street? My understanding is that some of that had, or I had been kind of through talk, heard that a lot of that had been worked out with, um, signage of parking on just one row, or one side of the road. And I'm curious if that's the solution, or if there continues to be issues, and that's the, um, staff reservations about.
Um, Chair and Commissioner Sturso, the staff reservation is just that with each development that comes forward, um, without the ability, without the discretion in there, then we're kind of working it out after the fact. Um, so if, um, it, it may be that we would need to restrict parking on one side of the road, or restrict parking on both sides of the road. Either way, that's a conversation with the neighborhood, letting them know, erecting the sign, then enforcing the sign, people getting adjusted to the new rules and regulations, and all that is happening um, because, um, we don't, we no longer have the discretion, um, to require more or less parking base, situationally, by, on a case-by-case basis. So, in relation to Novo, um, for example, uh, yeah, the parking has, uh, you know, parking's been restricted on one side of the road, and, uh, snow removal's better, emergency vehicle access is better. But, um, there were site, uh, like site triangle issues of, you know, pulling out of driveways and, or pulling up to intersection, and then, so we kind of had to adjust where the signs were. And it is just more work for staff, um, in the long run, but not just planning, but, uh, public works and, um, police. So that, it was a collective decision to, uh, to try to retain the discretion.
So is the city, um, utilizing signage of limiting parking on one side of the road, is that an acceptable, is that something the city staff considers acceptable and is something that we can consider? Or is that something that's, that we are trying to avoid at all cost?
Um, I don't know that we avoid it at all costs. If, um, we, um, we want, it's easier to not have to do those things and, um, to not have the conflicts in the neighborhood. Um, so we would like to minimize those, but I, I don't think, uh, I think where it's appropriate, we're willing to do it.
I just, I do think that it is an appropriate mechanism, um, in certain situations, and I would hate for us to ignore that option. Uh, but to the other question about, um, and again, I'm not finding it in this PDF, but the sidewalks, I really appreciated the comments about, um, that staff made, that, um, as more people are parking on the streets, we need to be more mindful of the lack of sidewalks in a lot of the areas of Richfield. And I think the city has done, and, um, the council has done an excellent job in requiring developers to, um, build sidewalks on their property. Um, and I see developments where the sidewalks end, um, when their development ends. And I'm wondering if the city has a policy, a plan, any sort of, um, budget for how we think about sidewalks in the city with these developments? Not on the development site, but around the site, if that makes sense?
Yeah, we have thought about this, I wouldn't say we have a plan. We've kind of talked internally about what can we do to get more. Right now, this was interesting for me to learn, so thank you for asking it, but right now, we do not have any set funding source for new sidewalks annually in the city budget. There, basically, there is a master plan for pedestrian, uh, improvements throughout the city, but there's no priorities set. It basically is when, uh, a, a funding opportunity comes along, we look at the plan and think what might fit well, what could we get funding for? Oh, we got funding for this project, well, I guess that's our priority now, is this project, because now we have money for it. So, um, uh, as far as, um, oh, the other only option is that a neighbor, like a certain, a block or a street could band together and petition the city to build sidewalks. And then, um, they would, they would be taking on a, a special assessment to pay for those sidewalks. So that's not really a viable other option. So, um, we think, at least at a staff level, minim- somewhat, you know, not completely, but somewhat, the discretion that we're looking to have, that we recommend be retained, is helpful to negotiating for additional improvements beyond the property line, such as extended sidewalks. Because if people are, there's a, there's a direct link there. If people are going to have to walk further to where they parked, they need a path to safely get there in the wintertime when there's snow and on the ground and things like that. So, um, it's not necessarily always like that's a this for that. Uh, it doesn't, you know, doesn't necessarily work that way, but it does help if, um, the, there's some negotiation there that, that is taking place in exchange for what they desire and what, what we need.
I feel strongly about sidewalks, um, and I would recommend that we make a rec- we, um, include some sort of action regarding sidewalks. I think it's irresponsible for us to say, um, let the developer do what they do and then not have any responsibility on the city to, whether it's start discussions of developing a plan or financing, or funding sources, or, um, to do further study of the issue. But, um, I think that we're negligent if we don't put a recommendation in our motion to emphasize our need for improving the sidewalks in the city.
Planner Crosby, um, that kind of, I mean, that would be something, we're making a recommendation on this existing ordinance, but a, a larger discussion about city priorities with sidewalks is a city council, um, policy decision, right? So, I, I mean, in our, can, in what we send to the city council, can we add? The, the planning commission recommends that the city council begin a sidewalk plan?
Chair and Commissioners, I, I don't know that you'd necessarily include that in the motion, but everything that you do gets forwarded by way of minutes to the city council. And you could certainly like, you know, kind of take an informal poll and all, maybe all agree that yes, this is important, and we're, we're conveying that message to the city council. Certainly.
I would still recommend putting it in a motion, but also I would support that as well. I just think, um, we need to make sure that the, if other people on the commission agree with me. Um, I think it needs, um, this is something that's been in the background for a while, that's rumbled. And like, as we're seeing projects and we're living in this space, I feel like it's time to put a little bit more energy around this topic.
Not just.
Not just energy, but.
And, and not just because of parking conversations, but because of the general environment around driving.
And, and you know, as someone who grew up in Minneapolis, that was one of the shocks when I moved to Richfield, is that there is not, um, the easy accessibility of sidewalks. Um, and with an aging population and consideration for people with disabilities who don't drive, and also. and also from a level of, you know, reducing the driving, I think it would be worthwhile. I agree with Commissioner Sturso that it would be worthwhile to put in the minutes of our strong, or our feelings that the city council should be addressing sidewalks.
I agree. I also think we're kind of on a tangent, and so to bring it back, is there a way where we can carve out just, I guess this is for city staff, is there a way where we can carve out just restaurants, class three restaurants with drive-throughs? Or is it all or nothing type of a thing?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question completely. What do you mean by carve out?
So if you were to change the requirements for a restaurant and say that if it has a drive-through, we would reduce the number, if it does not, not reduce the number?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Thank you, sorry. So yes, yes, we can do that. Right now, it's a conditional use permit for a drive-through. So like the idea of having a drive-through is kind of separate from having the idea, not every restaurant has a drive-through. So we could put the parking requirements, yes, we can separate it out. I can figure out how to do that.
For the sake of time, can I make a motion?
So what I'm getting is you want to carve out, you want to keep everything the same except for drive-throughs when it comes to restaurants?
Yes. So my motion would be to accept staff report, staff recommendation, with the exception of maintaining the current parking for non-drive-through, so only change, reduce it for drive-throughs.
Is there anyone who would second that?
Can you just talk me through that?
Yeah, yeah. So the class three restaurant seems to be a rather broad generalization, and so I do think that you could, I mean, just going around town, if a restaurant has a drive-through, usually it's empty parking lot. And so I think it makes sense to reduce the amount of parking there. But for restaurants that do not have a drive-through and would be more sit-down, I think that keeping the things the way it is, leaving parking for people, I think is important. So I'd suggest keeping current language for those that do not have a drive-through.
And this is what we just heard was that the current levels are quite high compared to our neighbors, right?
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was tracking the conversation.
But I mean, the report here says, you know, St. Paul, Minneapolis have lower, but then again, when I try to go...
Fair, fair. I just wanted to connect the dots in my head.
Yep, I hope that makes sense.
All right. So is there a second for that motion?
Before we proceed, I feel like there's a lot of other things in this staff report that, that's one thing. I have a question about the kind of the thirty-six-foot right-of-way thing.
Okay. Why don't we, let's right now limit ourselves, at this moment, there's been a motion made about carving out restaurants, so let's address that, and then we can go back to the main motion. So I... Correct, so that's...
But isn't that, isn't this a broad motion to accept the whole?
I was interpreting it as a motion to amend the recommendation, that we would move on the rest of it. Is that, is that a correct interpretation?
Yeah, I, so I also think the right-of-way, that what was brought up by staff about the right-of-way is important for emergency...
Is there a second on the restaurant, on amending the recommendation for a restaurant? All right, hearing no second, there's, you know, that's it for that. So now, you wanted to go back to...
Yeah, with the thirty-six-foot, my question was, making a broad ruling, it seems like a lot of these situations where, you know, it seems like it might be better addressed case by case rather than just a broad ruling of, I don't know if like adjusting the parking is necessarily going to like fix that problem. Like I could still see, like those examples that were noted, those comply with the current code for parking, right? And that's still an issue?
Chair and Commissioners, no. The three recent multifamily projects where we've had onsite issues did have the reduction down to 1.25 stalls per unit.
And the staff feels that a broad, you know, a broad ordinance would fix those in all same situations and...
Chair and Commissioners, staff feels like we're learning as we go, and we have learned from a few mistakes, and we'd like to, the preference is to not make them again.
Sure.
Any other discussion on any part of the recommendations? All right, then I would...
Yeah, you should ask the commission if they would...
We could. Is there, would, does someone want to move to reopen the public hearing to allow for additional public comment? Is there a motion?
I move.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to reopen the hearing for additional public comment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That, the motion carries, the hearing is reopened, and you may address the commission.
This is a big issue. Again, I'm Larry Ernst, 6727 Elliott Avenue South, and this is a huge, multifaceted, many-dimensional issue, and it's going to take hours. As I mentioned before, you know, leave it alone because the, every, first of all, what you're not going to change McDonald's parking, it's already there. This only would apply to new development, and if you leave things the way they are, the city has the option for variance for all new projects, new developments. And let that deal with the nuances of each new development rather than trying to set global rules that are fraught with failure.
I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing again.
So moved, Serma?
Seconded.
All right, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the public hearing is closed. Is there any discuss, we would need a motion then to move the recommendation to the city council?
I'll move that we recommend approval of an ordinance amending, an ordinance amendment adjusting parking regulations. I want to make an amendment. Do I do that right now?
Before you would make this motion then?
Okay, and I'd like to, in the motion...
So you want to, before you move this, you want to make a motion to amend the, what we recommend to the city council?
Well, if I've, I mean, if that's how you want me to do it, I can do that. I want to make an amendment that says to encourage staff to study the creation of a comprehensive sidewalk policy and to continue conversations and study of reducing parking along rapid transit.
Could I make a suggestion that we make that a separate motion, like for a sense of the commission, and ask Planner Crosby to relay those, the feelings of the commission to appropriate, appropriate, to the city council and appropriate city staff, and we separate that from this recommendation about the ordinance?
I mean, that's not my preference, but if that's the preference of the commission, of course I support that.
It just seems cleaner and, because like this is a specific thing that we have to do about, for this amendment.
And both of the amendments are very related to parking regulations. Both of them were, one was discussed in the work session, and the other one was discussed in the staff report. They're, to me, very relevant, and I think that by including them in the motion, they, it highlights the importance. But again, that's just me. If we want to, you know, just pass it along, that's fine too, but my preference would be that it is part of the action that we take tonight.
I would also be, I like splitting them. I don't know if I want to put the sidewalks in with everything else that's here where this is fairly narrow, and the sidewalk thing, I completely agree with you, and it's just I don't know if we want to throw that in with this and jeopardize all these other changes with that.
Well, I think our, Planner Crosby, our, I mean, this, our requirement right now is about, is about this specific ordinance, and this ordinance is dealing with the parking requirements. I mean, how, just from a logistical standpoint, what do you think it would make, would it be logical for us to put an amendment into this recommendation about asking for sidewalk plans, or would that make more sense to do as a separate, like resolution for the sense of the commission?
It could be done either way. It's just a recommendation, so it could be done either way, not to make it more confusing for you guys, but sorry.
So, yeah, I, if you want to... Okay, so...
Seconded by Tarleton.
So let's, let's go back to that. You, so you are moving that we accept the recommended, that we accept the recommended staff act, the staff recommended action with the addition of...
Additional study for sidewalk policy and funding, and additional study of the reduced parking requirements around rapid trans, or around transit broadly, I think Sam knows what I'm getting at, but I don't want that conversation to end, like the conversation that we had in the work session. I don't want us to lose momentum on that. I was disappointed it wasn't part of these recommendations, and so I just want us to continue talking about it is the point of that.
All right, is there a second?
Already seconded it.
Okay. So we have, so let's, let's split this up first as an amendment, you're proposing to amend the recommended, you're proposing to amend the staff recommended action to include about, okay. And so we have a second for that. So all those in favor of amending that recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we can move on to the main motion, and then we would need a motion to adopt the amended resolution.
Commissioner Sturso makes a motion to recommend approval of an ordinance amendment adjusting the parking regulations with the two approved amendments.
All those in favor...
Seconded to Serma.
All right, thank you very much. Sorry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Next, on the agenda, it would be liaison reports, Community Service Advisory Commission. City Council is me. At the most recent meeting, the, we're, again, discussion about the safe routes to school, which overlaps with what the school board had been discussing recently as well, and then a joint powers agreement with the city of Edina about 911 dispatch and responding to certain emergencies with mental health providers and creating a partnership with Edina about dispatch for those issues. And then the crosstown, the barrier for noise reduction to contract with MnDOT about proceeding with that. Housing and redevelopment authority.
The HRA approved a donation for the metro sales land around 494 and 77 that was talked about, no, that was talked about where the velodrome location is being discussed. It was, the Mathwig Trust donated the two additional properties for a total of land value of 4.2 million dollars, so it was a pretty significant land donation. And the HRA is expected to hear about the velodrome plans, given the lack of a bonding bill approval by the state this year. At their upcoming meeting, they're going to hear the status of that.
All right, school board. All right, Transportation Commission?
No report, Chair.
Chamber of Commerce?
No report.
All right, and the Sustainability Commission?
Small report, just that most of the trees sold at the tree sale, there's eighteen left, and they're figuring out a way to more equit, like distribute the leftovers equitably. Rain barrels have sold out, and there was a compost drop on May 3rd, which I think is now gone, so that's it.
City planners report.
Just that we are, we are having, we are now, actually, it is a hundred percent on the joint planning commission and council work session to discuss Minnesota Independence Community Colleges plans on Tuesday, June 25th at 5:45 PM. The, and then there's a second joint work session between the planning commission and city council on July 9th at 6:00 PM to discuss regulating cannabis dispensaries. It's going to be fun, very fun. So fun.
All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved, Serma?
Seconded, Caneley.
All those in favor of adjourning the planning commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.